Everyone, my name is Tom O'Brien. I'm the Executive Director for the Center for International Trade and Transportation at Cal State Long Beach. I'm also the Deputy Director of the Met Trans Transportation Center. Met Trans is a partnership, Transportation Center partnership between the University of Southern California and Cal State Long Beach. And on behalf of the university's president, Jane Close Connolly, and the Associate Vice President for International Education and the Dean of my college, Chee Choshee, I'm very pleased to welcome you to the 19th CITT State of the Trade and Transportation Industry Town Hall meeting. It's wonderful to see this room full of people, so thank you. Since our first town hall in 1999, our goal has been to provide a forum in which to explore a key issue challenging the goods movement industry and the many stakeholders who are in some way connected to the industry. We've addressed a range of topics over those 20 years. We've done so in a way that we believe is respectful of each other's opinions and in the spirit of education, and that will be our goal for today as well. This is the first time we've taken the town hall off-campus in 20 years, and it's the first time we've held it in the morning as opposed to the afternoon. And obviously, for those of us in the supply chain industry, breakfast is an important KPI, apparently. This year's theme is the smart port of the future, which encompasses questions of energy, efficiency, the environment, technology, and the workforce. And we're going to address all of those topics today with a really well-informed and expertise panel. Our town hall on smart ports is the first, actually the second in a series of activities this week that we're branding as Smart Freight Week. We had a workshop with some of our Caltrans folks yesterday. This afternoon, we have a policymakers workshop focused on the last mile. And then tomorrow, the International Urban Freight Conference begins, also here at the Maya. For those of you who enjoy Twitter and are tweeters, hashtag Smart Freight Week is where you want to send all your comments and photos. The International Urban Freight Conference, which, as I mentioned, happens tomorrow, is going to feature a wide range of sessions on all things urban freight as viewed from a number of different perspectives: economic, social, political, engineering, environmental, and international. One of the benefits of having the town hall co-located with INUFO is that we're able to take advantage of a number of people from across the globe who are here for that conference. We have 20 different countries represented at INUFO today, and many of those have been sponsored by the Volvo Research and Education Foundations. If I could ask some of our international participants or those who are here from other countries to stand and be recognized, please do so now. Thank you and welcome to Long Beach. I should add that all of these activities over the course of this week are eligible for continuing education units through the American Planning Association, and the instructions, if you want to pursue securing those, are on the monitor. We have other special guests I'd like to recognize briefly. We exist at the university first and foremost because of our students, and I'd like to welcome the students, graduates, and instructions from our Global Logistics Specialist, Marine Terminal Operations Program, our Master's Program in Logistics and Supply Chain. All of you, welcome today. Thank you for your continued support of CITT. And of course, the instructors in our room from all of those programs for your continued dedication. This year, the GLS program is 22 years old, and we're going to be launching a new and exciting revamped program for the spring of 2020 with some exciting classes that reflect the dynamism of the goods movement industry. And Angelie Logan, who runs those programs for us, is sitting over here, I believe, and she'll be downstairs after if you wanted to get more information on the programs. I'd also like to recognize the members of the CITT Policy and Steering Committee. Their names are listed on the program, and I'd like you to help me recognize them and thank them for making today possible. They represent all segments of our industry, community, and labor, and we couldn't do what we do at CITT without their assistance. So if the members of the Policy and Steering Committee in the room could please stand and be recognized, I'd welcome that. I'd also like to recognize some of the representatives of the elected officials and dignitaries in attendance here today. I hope I haven't missed anybody when I read the list, and thank you for joining us. We have Diane Middleton, Harbor Commissioner, Port of Los Angeles; Fran Inman, Chair of the California Transportation Commission; Lauren Vargas, from Mayor Garcia's office, City of Long Beach; and Hina Ahmad, the Office of Assembly Member, Patrick O'Donnell. Thank you all. I know we have a number of representatives of the ILWU in the room, and they're led by their three presidents: Ray F. Malathie, ILWU Local 13; Joe Gasparoff, Local 63; and Denny Miranda, Local 94. And you'll get a chance to see Ray on the podium in a little bit, so thank you to the We also want to welcome our various other partners from industry and the community. These include our friends from the Port of Long Beach Academy of Global Logistics at Cabrillo High School. The university and CITT in particular are thrilled to be part of this exciting effort to develop career pathways in logistics right here in Long Beach. This morning, I think we have about five students from AGL, led by instructors Kimberly Oliver and Mark Hankison. The students have a job this morning. They're going to be documenting the proceedings, so be careful of what you say. If I could ask the students from Cabrillo and their teachers to stand, please. And of course, I'd also like to thank our sponsors, who make sure that we can keep this event free of charge and open to the public. These include our principal funders for all of the Met Trans projects: the U.S. Department of Transportation and Caltrans, and the Volvo Research and Education Foundations. Caltrans has made a significant commitment to professional development, and I believe we have 19 employees from Caltrans who will be taking part in Smart Freight Week activities. They're led by Yatman Kwan, and I would like to have the Caltrans team stand and be recognized. And then our Smart Freight Week sponsors: the Federal Highway Administration, ILWU Local 13, Farron Peers, and Watson Land Company. Thank you all for your generous financial support, which makes this morning possible. And then finally, our Met Trans associates. The associates program provides the core support for what we do at Met Trans. As you all know, we cannot survive on grant funding alone, so we truly appreciate the support of our Met Trans associates. Met Trans is led by Dr. Jen Giuliano at the University of Southern California. Under her leadership, our two universities have gained a national and even international prominence in transportation-related research, education, and training. And this town hall has extended its reach beyond Long Beach because of our affiliation with Met Trans, so thank you to Dr. Giuliano, our key partner in Met Trans. And finally, a thank you to those organizations who have joined the Met Trans associates program: the Ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles, Southern California Association of Governments, LA Metro, Metro Link, Majestic Realty, Nixon Peabody, HDR, and Yusen Terminals. Thank you all. Okay, and now on to the town hall and our discussion of the smart port of the future. We want to gain, gauge your knowledge of the topic and your interest in it, and so we have a bit of a quiz to start the morning. If everyone could take out your phone, right? This will be relatively painless, I promise. And I would like you to go to your browser and type in menti, M-E-N-T-I, dot com. And you'll be given a code to plug in, and you should get access to the first question in the quiz. Now, one of the things you like to do at the beginning of a town hall is read the temperature of the room, so I want you to begin by actually telling me how you like the temperature of the room. We need to see if this is a tough crowd or not. Okay, a little too warm, right? All right, well, we can monitor that throughout the course of the morning, right? So the next question will be coming up, and these are much more directly related to the topic at hand. We also want to see who's in the room, who you represent. This always helps the attendees know who they're speaking to and perhaps what some of the issues are that are most critical to you, right? So we have a balance. We have government, education, we've got some workforce development, labor, the port sectors, well-represented in other industries, so that's nice. We get to have a good balanced audience, which always makes for an interesting discussion. And of course, can't forget the education sector as well. And we'll expect all of those to be represented when it comes to question and answer time. All right, so this is a quiz. How many electric vehicle charging stations are in California? This was a number that was recently reported in the Los Angeles Times. Want to see whether you think it's 9,000, 18,000, or 36,000 EV charging stations. 18,000 is right, right? One of the things that we're going to be talking about in a little bit is the infrastructure that supports some of the shift toward electrification of the goods movement system. That's one of the topics that we'll be addressing, so we got a smart, we have a smart group in the room. Next question. By 2035, and this is according to the California Sustainable Freight Action Plan 2016, California aims to have how many zero-emission freight vehicles in operation? Now, we should have some people in the room familiar with the California Sustainable Freight Action Plan. This is statewide, zero-emission freight vehicles on road. 10,000, 50,000, 100,000. 100,000 is the answer. The role of policy and planning, including the California Sustainable Freight Action Plan and the Clean Air Action Plan, are two of the things that we'll be discussing this morning, right? Few more questions, then we'll get started with the discussion. The International Maritime Organization requires a 50% reduction in total annual GHG emissions by what year? 2020, 2030, or 2050? This obviously comes directly from the IMO. 2030 is the guess of most people. It's actually 2050, hey? California's a bit more aggressive and ahead of the curve in terms of some of its regulations, right? But for the IMO, the plan is by 2050, okay? Now, this next question that's coming up is a bit more qualitative than quantitative. It's going to be asking currently the most essential requirement for freight efficiency, and this comes from a recent article in supply chain diversity. We just wanted to get your opinion. Are we talking wider highways, data visibility, on-dock rail, or dedicated corridors? It's contributing most to efficiency. And here we go. Data visibility is the one that got the most responses, also the one that's correct, right? Not to say that those others are not critical, but we're certainly entering a time where data visibility transparency is increasingly critical, and that's something else that we're going to be discussing this morning. Okay, the next question is going to be, we have some port folks in the room, and this will be a ringer for them, but it asks about the capacity of the new largest vessels online. And this is the, what is the capacity measured in 20-foot equivalent units, TEUs, of the MSC Gulson, the world's largest container ship to date? Is it close to 29,000 TEUs, 24,000, or 21,000? Yep, and 24,000 TEUs, right? Big ships regardless, all of them. One of the things, so we'll be talking a little bit about the impact of broader supply chain trends, like the move toward larger vessels and what it means for port operations. We're also going to be talking about workforce this morning and the impact of technology and skills needed. And the next question is about workforce and skills for the supply chain broadly. Within how many years will artificial intelligence become a core competency for supply chain workers? And this comes from the Material Handling Industries' annual industry support, based upon a survey of its members. Three years, five years, or 10 years? Three years. In fact, the average lifespan of a new technology-based skill that's learned is applicable for only three years on the job, and then upskilling is required to take advantage of the, to take advantage and be able to use new technology, okay? And then we have one more question of a quiz nature, and then we want to hear what you want to learn today. The last question is, according to the World Economic Forum, what percent of all employees will require significant upskilling by 2022? Get your answers in. This is your last chance. 54% was the guess of most of the people in the room, and that's in fact the answer, right? We have one more question that we're going to ask, which is, asks you to do a little typing instead of selecting. We want to know what best describes what you want to learn from this town hall. That helps me as I ask the questions as moderator and helps the panelists see, gauge the pulse of the room. So what is it that you want to learn from this town hall? Should start seeing the answers populating. Here we go. Freight, infrastructure. There's no correct answer. That's true. Anything that you want to, anything that you want to know about, right? We'll see what we can do to try to make it regardless an engaging discussion. Well, thank you. Thank you for your input. I hope it gets us focused a little bit on the topic at hand. But to help us get us started with the discussion, as always, we begin with a video that's produced specifically for this event, produced by the College of Professional and International Education's Advanced Media Production Team, led by Dave Kelly and Dave Pleskett. And AMP and Dave have won numerous awards for their work, including town hall videos, and I think this year's is of a similarly high quality. They had the challenge of taking what is a very complex set of interconnected, but sometimes very different topics, and putting them together into what I think is a very informative 13-minute video that will set the stage for our discussion to follow. So please enjoy the video, and then we'll get the panel up on the stage.
The San Pedro Bay encompasses America's largest port complex, accounting for about 35% of all imported products arriving at U.S. shores. This total market share has declined significantly in recent years as trade patterns have shifted. Two major factors in the local harbor are driving goods movement operations towards smart technology solutions. The first is North American competition, which is actively seeking and securing freight handling and logistical services contracts for discretionary cargo. The second is the enactment and enforcement of air quality and carbon footprint reduction mandates. The future of the San Pedro Bay will be determined by these two challenges and by the adoption of new and responsive smart technology applications that increase efficiency and reduce costs. World trade was forever changed with the introduction of containerization in the 1960s. With this relatively simple but practical innovation, loose cargo could be contained in a stackable rectangular box. Not only was the container stackable, it also could be transported intermodally to its final destination via any combination of trucks, trains, and ships. Intermodality over the past six decades has led to massive and continual increases in the flow, capacity, and growth of trade across the oceans and across the continents. However, continuous growth always reaches critical peaks, which generate new problems that have to be addressed. Unless adequately resolved, those new problems stall additional growth and often make it difficult to maintain the peak levels. In the case of cargo, too many containers at one time in one place can cause congestion. Congestion jams the terminals, the freeways, and the side streets as trucks arrive in the lineups to pick up their loads. Congestion and inefficiency also can negatively impact the community and can degrade the environment and the quality of life. The solution involves becoming smarter than the problem. It means that every sector of the industry has to become smarter in order to keep up and improve. Freight itself has to become smarter, and the methods by which it is tracked, moved, and coordinated have to be made smarter. Along those lines, a consortium of ocean carriers is embarking on an effort to standardize data protocols for freight movement. The Digital Container Shipping Association will harmonize uniform practices in data handling for nine of the 11 largest carriers, which control about 70% of container capacity.
Data points exist throughout the supply chain universe, and we have, along with GE Transportation, have found a way to harness those data points, put them into one single pane of glass through aggregation, and give us visibility to all the activities happening within the supply chain. It started off by building a relationship with U.S. Customs in Washington, and then the partnerships, as Chris mentioned, with the liner shipping companies to share that data, overlay it, examine it, so we know what is coming to us. The beauty is, that information was available in grayscale format maybe two days before a vessel arrived in Los Angeles. Today, our goal was to try to get that information about 14 days before it comes to LA, and we're seeing, based on origin, as much as 38 days prior to arrival in Los Angeles, we've got visibility.
If freight mostly entails inanimate objects packed inside a container, how can that freight become smarter? While there is no way to physically animate lifeless cargo, the information about that cargo actually can live a virtual life through technology. Cargo manifests, itemized lists of goods, descriptions and photos of said cargo, points of origin, daily tracking, estimated dates of delivery, and real-time notification of arrival all can be conveyed through InfoTech. Recent developments in the use of blockchain technology can and will convert the longtime art of estimating cargo delivery dates into an exact science.
I think the key is leveraging the data that's at everybody's fingertips or that exists in sort of these transaction that largely has been some sort of tribal knowledge, right? Someone had been sitting at that desk dispatching the same trade lane for the last 20 years, and they just knew that it would take a day and a half to get to a certain warehouse, and that's how they were sort of maybe ballparking it on their static document they were sharing back and forth to a client. I think the reality is, we need to sort of take a step back from that and appreciate all the data points that exist on a particular trade lane, whether it be air, ocean, last-mile delivery. There's a lot of great data out there. It's just a matter of aggregating it and using it to provide the best-informed, call it approximation or schedule.
The use of uniform information portals and protocols, along with the implementation of the blockchain to pinpoint the whereabouts and condition of specific cargo, will go a long way toward optimizing efficiency in the distribution and delivery of goods. Expanding access to more on-dock rail also can help reduce congestion as cargo volumes grow. Additionally, the infrastructure around the harbor and throughout the cities near it must be upgraded with adequate truck lanes, bridges, and access points which facilitate rapid movement of trucks without impeding regular automobile traffic.
Even though we can dramatically increase the efficiency of what we have out there now, at some point, we will have used up all the capacity, even with efficiency improvements. And so at that point, we're going to need more infrastructure of some sort. I think probably most of us would want that infrastructure in the form of more on-dock rail, so that we could be more efficient getting things in and out. But nevertheless, I think we really will need to have some incremental amount of new infrastructure-related capacity.
The state of California has imposed very strict regulations regarding air pollution and greenhouse gases. In response, an updated San Pedro Bay Clean Air Action Plan has been jointly authorized by both the Port of Los Angeles and the Port of Long Beach. The Clean Air Action Plan, or CAP, provides direction for the anticipated zero-emission mandates headed for the harbor in 2030. The plan's shift away from fossil fuels is driving the effort to electrify marine terminal yard vehicles and to potentially utilize fuel cell technology and batteries for trucks and other heavy equipment.
The ultimate goal is zero emissions, and that's zero smog emissions and zero carbon emissions for transportation. And at one time, the focus was solely on light duty, and now it's shifted into medium duty, heavy duty, trucks transport even vessels off the shores here. So electric drive, for the most part, has less moving parts, and maintenance may actually be, less maintenance may be required, so operating cost can be lower. This will come over time. The key will be through scale. We're at the kind of low-volume levels today, so everything does have a higher cost. That was true with CNG vehicles at one time, and then with scale, it kind of took off on its own and no longer needed, you could say, public assistance. So the same thing will happen with hydrogen and fossil.
Marine terminals are at the cutting edge of automation on a variety of fronts. Worldwide, automation has been implemented at 44 major port terminals, but only five are located in the United States. Efficiency, cutting expenses in the long run, reducing truck trips and truck waiting time, along with the mandates to eliminate exhaust emissions, have combined to convert some San Pedro Bay terminals into veritable laboratories of technological into veritable laboratories of technological innovation. This innovation also arises as a remedy for problematic mega-ships bearing massive loads, which often create bottlenecks and surges in container movement within the conventional terminals and on local streets. Beyond traditional longshore tasks, there are numerous types of jobs which will be essential in keeping facilities running properly in zero-emission terminals. Those new assignments encompass servicing and repair of battery-operated vehicles, cranes, and related electrical systems. Ongoing upkeep of software-controlled mechanical operations will be required. New job training will be provided at various levels from technical maintenance to power systems replacement. Upskilling the harbor workforce in areas associated with electrical engineering and energy engineering will sow new opportunities for technology-intensive careers. Whichever way the industry proceeds, many new jobs and new industry sectors will be created as terminals shift to automation, electrification, sustainable energy, and zero emissions.
There are still mechanical elements on the docks that will continue, and there will be a need for a mechanical awareness. So we're looking at hybrid fields, mechatronics, folks who have an understanding of not only mechanical matters, they understand the electrical requirements required to, for example, support, operate, maintain an electric charging station. All of that will also require an information technology awareness to ensure that, again, the digital information supply chain that runs parallel to the physical supply chain are also maintained and protected.
Port officials and industry leaders claim that the zero-emission ports will ultimately generate thousands of new jobs off the docks in logistics and support services because a rapid expansion of trade will be possible with these facilities operating 24/7. Automation, they say, will enable efficient, cost-effective, and reliable handling of goods from vessels capable of 22,000 TEU container loads. Agreements between the Pacific Maritime Association Management Group and the International Longshore and Warehouse Union will authorize and provide the skills retraining necessary to appropriately transition current dockside labor for the future of automated technology. Meanwhile, state and local policymakers are keeping an eye on the potential impact of automation and its effect on the workforce. Depending upon how the automation process evolves, those policymakers could decide to enter the fray. It remains to be seen how all of this will affect the community around the harbor area. Competition from other ports and the development of other trade routes around the globe may continue to reduce the overall market share of discretionary cargo traffic bound for the San Pedro Bay. One thing is certain. With a very large population base in the immediate and regional area, the demand for goods will continue to be strong in Southern California. Ultimately, smart technology will play a major role in how consumer items are delivered to local customers.
Thank you, and thank you to Dave, the two Daves, and AMP for their work on that. If I could ask the panelists to come up front, and while they do that, I'm just going to go over the order for this morning. I will serve as moderator, and I have a series of questions that I want to get started with as a discussion. But then we will open it up to questions from the audience. The format and guidelines for the public Q&amp;A portion are included in your program. Please keep questions to the point and on topic. As always, we don't entertain questions about specific contract, for example. No multiple-part questions, and we ask that you're careful to keep it to questions instead of commentary. We have a lot of people in the room. We want to make sure that we get as many voices heard as possible. You can ask questions by either writing it down on the pad at your seat. And then I believe Golnaz will be collecting those. Golnaz, can you stand? There, she's in the back, right? So she will be collecting those and feeding them to, we have Don on this side of the room and Michelle on this side of the room. We also will have CJ Nord. CJ, if you could stand, who will move around the room with a mic. You can ask those questions that way. All right. So I'm going to take my seat between this esteemed panel. The names and bios of this group is in your program. They're all expert and have a lot to offer and allow us to address the breadth and depth of the topics that we've chosen to address today. I want to have each of them begin by introducing themselves and answering a question, sort of an opening question, which is how they define the smart port. I think the video is fairly optimistic in the future about the smart port. But so I want to ask each of you, what makes a port smart, in your opinion? So we'll go down the line this way and maybe start with Chad.
Good morning. First off, a smart port understands the competition for discretionary cargo and takes necessary steps to prepare for the future. I think a smart port is one that uses technology and a modern workplace practices to achieve high levels of productivity. It also appreciates the role of workers who benefit from trade. That means workers at the terminals as well as the tens of thousands of workers in logistics whose livelihood depends on a healthy West Coast trade. Smart port is one that is focused on the training of workers for future jobs. And last of all, a smart port is a safe port.
Thanks, Chad. Chad, of course, with the Pacific Maritime Association. So maybe I'll turn to this side, since we've heard from the PMA. Want to give some, want to give an opportunity to the ILWU to answer the same question. And I'll say upfront that Ray Famalathy is extremely dedicated and committed today. He just had some surgery, so he may be putting on eyeglasses today. So thanks for making the extra effort, Ray.
Good morning, my apologies. I just had detached retina, so I just got over surgery last week, and my right eye is a little bit foggy, but I can see most of you. Yeah, a smart port is a port that uses its resources. And the most vital resource on a marine terminal are the humans there. Artificial intelligence and other technologies are coming into play, but it's the human factor, the judgment call. It doesn't matter whether you're at a conventional marine terminal or a marine terminal like Middle Harbor, Long Beach Container Terminal. The human intervention with the new technologies, being able to make that gut, split-second decision call is, I think, the important factor. When you talk to the technology experts, artificial intelligence hasn't reached that point. As we move forward, the resources in the port are extremely important to working with these new technologies. And our ILWU workforce is ready for the challenge, but we also have a voice in how these technologies will be rolled out for the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. We'll go back to Heather. From maybe perhaps an environmental perspective, what makes a port smart?
Sure. So I'm Heather Tomlin. I'm with the Port of Long Beach. And I think for me, a smart port, and maybe it's the background that I have in environmental, is really finding that balance and seeking sustainability. I think you have to make sure that you're having a good, vibrant port operation in total that really emphasizes the opportunity to have a thriving economy, and the businesses need to be successful. But that needs to be balanced with making sure that you're addressing the environmental impacts that can be associated with that and really supporting the community, not just the local community where the port is located, but also the workforce and all of the folks that work at the ports and need to be successful in their jobs as well. So it's not one thing. It's everything in balance, working together for us to be successful and smart.
Thanks, Heather. You mentioned workforce, so that's a nice segue to Avine, maybe. In your capacity at the Port of LA, Avine, maybe thinking about workforce and labor relations, what makes a port smart, in your opinion?
So I think a smart port is, you know, in the way we talk about in different contexts with, you talk about someone who's got book smarts and street smarts or IQ and EQ, and I think ports are no different. I think there's, a smart port has, you know, we see videos and we go to presentations about, you know, everything's moving to the cloud, IOT, other aspects. And yeah, there's that part of the smart port. But to really echo what Heather and Ray have said, too, is that there's, I think a smart port is also a thoughtful port in recognizing impacts, and impacts on the community, impacts on the environment. And I think, while as the port doesn't always have the silver bullet solution, I think a smart port works with the various stakeholders, has the right voices at the table, whether it's labor, whether it's environmental community groups. I think that's, it's having that recognition of the impacts, I think, helps make a port smarter than just beyond shoving everything into the cloud.
Thanks. And Patrick, you have some perspective, I think, both sort of inside and outside the port as well. Maybe talk for a minute about the role that GNA has played in all of this, and from your observation, what makes a port smart?
So Patrick Couch, I'm our Senior Vice President of Technical Services at GNA. We do a lot of consulting with fleets in the good movement space, whether that's drayage fleets, marine terminals within the ports, or the broader freight network. So we see a lot of different types of fleets, government fleets, private fleets, trying to solve this question of how do we move forward in a sustainable manner, both from a business and an economic or environmental perspective? So what makes a port smart? I think I want to continue a theme I just heard, which is I think it's the people that make the port smart. But one of the most important things that you can do for those people is to give them the tools that they need to be smart, right? That's why data visibility is so important. If you give people those tools, they will amaze you at what they come up with to enhance efficiency, to work smarter, to work safer.
That's good. And you mentioned the question of data. I know one of the reasons that the Port of LA initially adopted its incentive program was to be able to get data from some of its partners in the supply chain because visibility and transparency is so important. So I want to ask each of you about the role that changing data, data gathering, and data collection means for the work that you do. And Heather, maybe I'll start with you because on the environmental side, we can't develop good plans and policies unless we have good data.
Right. I think that's essential. You need to know the lay of the land and the situation that you're dealing with, and you need to have some good insights into that so that you can make smart plans and come up with the strategies that you need to to try to address where there's challenges and pain points, but then also make smart choices for how you can improve the operations going forward. And that applies in the environmental side. It applies in the operations side, just across the board. To make good decisions, you need good information to be able to base that on. And so I think that there's a lot of growing interest, and we've been able to be really successful in doing a good job at the operations that we do with the information that we have. But for us to push forward into the next level and really be able to take advantages of where there might be additional efficiencies and better ways for us to use the existing infrastructure that we have, we need to make sure that we have good information so that we can all work together, improve those efficiencies, and really be able to take ourselves to the next level.
Has it been easier to get data recently? Or is it the proliferation of it making things more complicated?
I mean, it's a lot of things. We're now talking about, you know, potentially different data sets that we weren't necessarily looking at before. And so being able to get insight into some different information that maybe we haven't been gathering and aggregating all of that, to your point, if we really want to make smart choices, there are a lot of different data sets that are out there. How do you take all of that and make it meaningful and process it in a way that you can really learn from it and use it? And the only way that you can do that is through some kind of data aggregation system.
Patrick, you spend a lot of time with data. What changes have you seen and you observed in terms of its ability to help us with the port operations and the supply chain as a whole?
Sure. Practically every vehicle out there now comes with some sort of telematics. You know, when we started in looking at the first clean trucks program in 2005, '06, we had to implement an OCR program to just figure out which trucks were coming into the terminal. Now we have data systems that tell us exactly which trucks came into the terminal, how frequently, which terminal it was. Those sorts of, the proliferation of data, I think to Heather's point, is tremendously useful, but only if you have the systems connected in a way that people can use them, right? It doesn't help to have a siloed data set sitting in a drayage or marine terminal operator's server somewhere if it's not accessible and able to be connected to another part of the supply chain. And I'll echo Heather's comments. You know, there's this truism, you can't improve what you can't measure. So we're gaining the ability to measure a lot more things, but the disconnectedness and the protection around the data, I think there's still, a lot of people are tremendously uncomfortable sharing their data. They feel like there's a competitive issue there. And so as long as those systems stay siloed and we don't create the common spaces for that data to be exchanged, I think we're going to have a really hard time getting the full value out of all that data.
Great. I wanted to open it up to either Chad, Ray, or Avine to talk a little bit about the value of data on the workforce, the workforce side.
Well, I'll talk about it just to, you know, Gene was in the video talking about our port optimizer. But really, the genesis of that port optimizer product that we worked with at the Port of LA was really about something Patrick mentioned in his last answer, which is about providing a tool. So the genesis of that was, in December 2015, we had the, as a lot of you know, the CMA, CGM Benjamin Franklin came to the Port of Los Angeles. And in Preparate, at the time, was the largest ship to call a North American port. And recognizing that was coming, there was a lot of preparation done for that arrival. And it was a joint effort with the terminal operators, with the ILWU, with the port, making sure they had the data there ahead of time to work together, to provide tools for the terminal operator, the Local 13 and the rest, and 63 and 94, to make sure that they were prepared for that historic event. And so, but that cooperation, that tools offered shouldn't just happen at a historical event. It should, you know, it should be a regular part of the dialogue. So I think it's important, it's important to have the, to take the data and see how we can best use it as a tool for everyone.
And maybe Ray and Chad, you can talk a little bit about some of the recent innovations in training and agreements that the PMA and the ILWU agreed upon with regard to, with regard to training at the port.
Go ahead, Chad.
Yeah, Ray and I, you know, not too long ago, made a deal on some training within the port in regards to maintenance and repair. It's a reskill and an upscale program. The reskilling is for existing longshoremen to become journeyman mechanics. And the upscale program is for existing mechanics and trying to bring them up to speed with all the new technology that'll be coming in and so that they can prepare for future work.
I think it's important, as we move to the future, as jobs are changing on the waterfront, particularly with the technology that's available, we've got traditional longshoremen that are concerned about the future of their work. And we wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to be upskilled and trained in mechanic technician positions. So that's what we recently did. We sat down and we're putting together now a criteria as far as the classroom training so that a traditional longshoreman that works out of the hiring hall could put in and get into the training program and be upskilled for the jobs of the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just add, you know, that we're currently working with the Port of L.A., we're very close to securing a piece of property. We're going through the process of what that infrastructure will be needed to get that up and going. And we're going to rely heavily on the ILWU, our M&amp;R vendors and member companies to work on that curriculum that Ray and I have been working on for the last couple of months, along with Avine.
Since we're on the subject of workforce and the video mentioned it, the question of automation is first and foremost on everybody's mind. So from your very unique and sometimes differing perspectives, is automation inevitable on the docks, or will we see a transition to a future that, where it's technology-based but not necessarily automated? So, yeah, Ray.
Automation on the waterfront, we're under a fishbowl right now. Automation and artificial intelligence is the highway to the future, and everyone wants to fast-track and get there. But the port and terminal business operates a bit different. Only a handful of terminal operators in the world have made that capital investment, you know, a half a billion to a billion plus dollars to automate a terminal. We're working with a lot of terminal operators here in Los Angeles and Long Beach that aren't in the position financially to make that type of investment. With the Clean Air Action Plan and the mandates there, automation was the first thing that comes to mind. I believe that we can achieve the best of both worlds. Right now, terminal operators are looking at hybrid equipment. This mandate right now for zero, well, maybe in another 10 years, we can get there. But with hybrid cargo handling equipment, like RTGs, electric UTRs that are your semi trucks that pull the containers around, we can get there. And we can do it effectively with a longshore workforce. We can be productive and efficient and meet the needs of the Clean Air Action Plan. You don't have to spend that billion dollars to clean up the air and create the efficiencies. There's plenty of technology available. We're talking about data. Data's so important. A lot of the technology terminal operators have invested in over the last 10 and 15 years just hasn't been very good. The profiles in the RTG stacks, there's nothing worse than when you're using technology, like we currently are, and an operator goes into the stack and the wrong container is identified, then all of a sudden you have to wait for human intervention to come in. There's a lot of new technology that can be purchased that's available now that is far better than the previous technology, and we look forward to working with those terminal operators. I represent humans. I don't manufacture a product. I supply labor to humans. And I think it's important that we keep the human component. Just this week, or last week, as I was recovering from my surgery, I was watching, or listening, shall I say, to the Future of Work Commission that Gavin Newsom had set up. And one of the best points I heard in the two-hour discussion was that when you're going to automate, that you have to reach out to the workforce. What happens in the port industry is, somebody like a ship owner says, you know something, I'm going to build a 30,000 TU ship. And then the ports and terminals and the whole supply chain infrastructure have to react. The lack of communication within the entire supply chain, from the ship owner to the distribution center on the back end, the drayage companies, the railroads, we're getting better at it in this modern age, and obviously with the increased data, like the Port of Los Angeles Port Optimizer, I think the visibility will help enhance cargo operations. But don't rule out humans and think that artificial intelligence is going to solve all of our problems today. I think we're a bit off, and we're going to keep investing in humans, because that automation that we're looking at in the ports has a huge impact. Robots don't pay local, state, or federal taxes. There's impacts to the communities, there's impacts to the workforce. So utilizing technologies, bringing the workforce along is the key component. As mentioned in the Future of Work Commission, if you take a workforce and you take technology and you say, how can we get the best out of the workforce in creating efficiencies that will help that workforce be more productive and efficient, but eliminate the fewest amount of jobs? That's what I want to hear from employers. That's what my workforce expects the discussion to be. Not just technology is great, we're going to automate everything, and artificial intelligence is going to replace all the workers.
Chad, can I get your perspective on the same topic?
Yeah. Modernization is inevitable. It's an important part of our history and our future. Traditionally, the employers and workers alike have recognized that harnessing technology enables ports to grow larger and more productive. Goes back to containerization, the mechanization and modernization agreement in 1960, our 2002 technology contract, our 2008 automation contract. For some companies, automating operations is an important part of their business plans, and for others, it's not as dominant. The key goal is not automation. The goal is maintaining the ability to stay competitive locally and globally. In today's marketplace, shippers have options, especially when considering that roughly half the cargo moving through these ports is discretionary and can go other places.
Heather, the Cleaner Action Plan has been mentioned a couple of times now as a driver in the adoption and requirements for some of the new technology. We have people in the room from other places. Would you take a moment to talk about the cap, how revolutionary it is in some ways, and its relationship to the adoption of technology on the docks?
Sure. So the Cleaner Action Plan was an effort that the two ports, Long Beach and Los Angeles, got together back in the mid 2000s, and really used it as an opportunity for us to address the air quality impacts that port operations were having on the local communities and the region. And it laid out the path for moving forward with cleaner operations, cleaner technologies, and it's the result of, it's the reason why we have the results that we have now for those significant emission reductions that we've been able to achieve since 2005. What we did in 2017 was an update to that plan, and that's where we laid out the path that is a lot of the, you know, the root of some of the discussions that we're having today, and that's to get to zero emissions as the ultimate goal for the terminal equipment and for the on-road trucks. And so we are moving on a path to develop technologies to help us to get there by 2030 in the terminals and 2035 for the on-road trucks, to get to zero emissions. And I think a lot of folks right now, because these technologies are just developing, we are putting a lot of emphasis on working with original equipment manufacturers to develop these pieces of equipment for the first time ever, and to put them into demonstration. There's a lot of unknowns at this point of what the actual operations are going to be like, what the costs are going to be like, and that's why we're doing these demonstrations, is to help us to get a better sense of what this path is going to look like. No two operators are going to make the same choice of how they do the operations. No two operators in this port have ever made the same choice of exactly how they do their operations. So I think that that's something to keep in mind. What we need to do is develop lots of tools in the toolbox so that each operator can make the smart choice that makes sense for them for moving forward with achieving our air quality goals, but doing it in a way that balances the sustainability initiatives that I mentioned at the beginning, so that they can perform well economically and also support the community and workforce.
And Patrick, maybe, oh, and Avine, did you want to add something?
Yes, sorry, just to piggyback off what Heather said. I mean, from my perspective at the Port of L.A., and I've talked to Heather's colleagues as well as Long Beach, you know, I think the workforce dimension that I'll add to what Heather said is, you know, as this new technology comes online with these goals for 2030, 2035, what keeps me up at night is thinking about the workforce and making sure the workforce is ready for that new technology. It's one thing to come up with a training program for an existing, an existing job or an existing piece of equipment. It's another thing to try to come up with a training environment for something that doesn't exist today. And so it's really about trying to create what I've described as an ecosystem across the San Pedro Bay that promotes workforce training, that promotes innovative training, so that we're better prepared, because that equipment that Heather talked about, it's coming and it will be here, but if it, you know, if it shows up tomorrow, we don't have that workforce training ecosystem in place. And so we need, you know, as the ports, you know, working, and you know, just a quick example is that we, at the Port of L.A., we have a grant from the state of California. It's called the High Road Training Partnership Grant, and we were awarded that, awarded that grant to set up because of a partnership we set up with the Port Authority, the ILWU, and the PMA about coming together and, you know, I think a theme that's come up here is about worker voice and having the right stakeholders there adding to a conversation. And through this grant, we've created this partnership and this cooperative effort to have these discussions about workforce training. And I think it's important as we move towards 2030 and 2035.
Well, speaking of those goals, Patrick, it may be a two-part question for you. One is that, as Heather was suggesting, that sometimes the cost of these new programs are uncertain and unpredictable. And we've also seen recently in California our vulnerability to the electric grid. So I'm wondering, the first part of the question is, why isn't near zero good enough, right? Can we secure enough with just near zero instead of zero? And secondly, is the future necessarily tied to battery electric as a source, a fuel source, as opposed to some others alternatives that might be available out there?
So I think when you ask the question, is it good enough, you have to put that in the context of timeframes, right? 2023, January of 2023, we have an air quality attainment deadline in the South Coast Air Basin. Right now, we are not on track to meet it. We need emissions reductions now. And when we look at the demonstrations that Heather was talking about, we need to get to the end of those demonstrations before we can figure out what the future technology paths really are going to be, what's viable in the ports. I think there's a lot of people that want to skip to the end of the book before the first chapter is written. So we need to see where those demos are going. But when we look at near zero technologies, we see an immediately viable solution, at least for some segments of port operation. So I think near zero is not only good enough, but is absolutely vital in the near term. In the long term, I'm not going to prognosticate until I see the real demonstrations, right? You have to, you have to look at the data that comes out of it rather than advocating for a hope or a desire. The second part of the question, I thought you said no multi-part questions, but I'll let you go.
I have the pride as moderator, though.
Is that, yeah, obviously with the wildfire power shut-offs in Northern California earlier, or last week, the, one of the questions that we have is, how does, how does battery electric fit into a future where we are connecting the reliability of the grid with the reliability of freight sector? And does that dissuade us from adopting battery electric technologies, or does it simply change the way we think about the amount of infrastructure we have to build? It's a good question. I think we are looking at, in practical terms, needing to develop resiliency and redundancy for power supply that up until now, we haven't really assumed is necessary. Although I will say, if you talk to the port operators, they'll probably tell you, we could always use better power quality, better reliability on the grid. For the rest of us, we tend to think that the grid's generally there, and if you lose power, it's maybe for a few minutes and it comes back on. The changes that we're seeing in the grid raise some questions about that. And I don't think battery electric is the given, you know, the presupposed winner in the future. Maybe it's fuel cell, maybe it's a combination of technologies. The only thing I know is that we at some point have to move away from traditional diesel.
Heather, did you have any comments on that you wanted to add?
Sure, I can just, and I'll address both the questions. So is near zero good enough? I think the state has been very clear about the direction that they're headed. And in the Sustainable Freight Action Plan, they made it very clear that the goal was to get to zero emissions everywhere, and where that's not possible, to get to near zero renewed, fueled with renewables. And so when we were developing the 2017 Cleaner Action Plan, it was at the time that the Sustainable Freight Action Plan had just come out, and we were looking to mirror our programs and to align our goals with the direction that was being given by the state. One of the criticisms that I've always heard from folks is, you know, be clear about what the end goal is. A lot of folks have felt like they've made progress, but then the finish line keeps moving on them. One of the things that we were doing with putting out a long-term goal to get to zero emissions is to be really clear about what that end goal is. There is an expectation that we be able to get to zero as the goal. I think that, to Patrick's point, the argument, and I think where we'll continue to have discussions, is what is the timeline? Is 2030 and 2035 the right goal? That's why we're doing a lot of these feasibility assessments in these demonstration projects, is to understand where we are on that path to progress and making sure that we are moving forward in a measured way and being smart about it. But the goal is to get to zero emissions, and we need to do that to address the air quality and climate change needs that we have. And so we'll continue on that path. And where there might be an opportunity in the interim for near zero, I think Patrick is right, because we do have near-term emission reduction goals and needs as well. For the future, is it just battery? I think Patrick answered that one well. We're technology neutral. We are not on one particular path. We have demonstrations underway with battery electric technology, with fuel cell technology. We are trying to learn about what technologies are available and what technologies might be best suited for different operations. And that information can be shared and understood with all of the operators as they're making a choice for how to move forward. We are also very concerned about the reliance on the electrical grid and potential outages. One of the things that we're doing right now is embarking on a study for the Port of Long Beach to really look at electrical resiliency and what that means to us as a port, and what we need to be planning for in building infrastructure so that we can be resilient and we can address concerns that folks have about what reliance on the grid might mean for their ability to continue operations.
Yeah, there's a supply chain for electricity too that has to be accounted. We're going to begin opening it up to the, to questions from the floor in a minute. So if you have ones you've written on paper, please hand them to Golnaz. She'll be moving around. There she is. And then, oh, we've got a bunch already, great. And then CJ will have, will have questions that can be offered from the floor by Mike, but I, and, oh, and Elizabeth as well. I have one, though, sort of one last question before I turn it over to the group here, and that is that sometimes being smart isn't about technology at all. It's about doing things better operationally. So I wanted to open up to any of you to answer, what else can we be doing to work smarter that really doesn't have anything to do with technology, right? Ray, you had mentioned just sort of people, being sort of people focused.
The example that Avine brought up is, I think, really critical to now and the future. When we prepared for the 18,000 TU ship Benjamin Franklin, all the stakeholders got together. We got on the same page. As longshoremen, we're used to working in chaotic environments where we're not always getting the information and the smooth flow of information so that we can actually be the most productive and efficient that we can be. When you look at the arrival for the Ben Franklin, when we got together, all the operational necessities that longshore workers on the terminal need to do their jobs was brought to them. And that's why during that vessel call, we achieved very high numbers as far as the discharge and loadback rates on the STS cranes, and the movement of cargo moved extremely efficiently. You get away from that one-off situation where we all prepared for that special day, and then we get into more of the chaos in regular business activities. We really need to be able to create the operational needs for the workers on the terminal so that we can give the best product to all the people that are doing business in the port.
Anybody else have any comments about doing smarter without necessarily a technology focus?
I could offer just a couple of quick things, and some of it was drawn out in the video too. You know, technology is going to be important for making a lot of advances, but we need to make sure that we're not just relying on technology. There are other things that we need to also continue to work on, like improving infrastructure. And we have a big focus on on-dock rail facilities that we're putting in. There's a lot of congestion issues on the freeway system all around the ports that we need to continue.
issues on the freeway system all around the ports that we need to continue to focus on making those improvements so that the overall system can flow better. We also need support facilities. And, and one of the things that we're doing in the Port of Long Beach is we're going to be issuing an RFI here shortly for a container and chassis support facility in the port so that we can have better movement, more efficient movement, and processing within the terminals, and be able to better utilize the terminal infrastructure. And I think that the point that Ray made, too, is the, the communication and partnerships and collaboration between all of the different folks in the supply chain, and just improving how we all work together can also go a long way to make sure that we're, that we're being as efficient as possible.
Great. I, I mentioned we have a number of international participants this morning. This is a question that comes from one of them, wondering about how unique these circumstances are to Southern California and how valuable the lessons in the smart port discussion might be outside of the region or outside of the country. Anybody want to tackle that?
I'll, I'll start. I, I think the best way I'd answer that question is, I am, as a Port of Los Angeles, am a part of a human capital working group, the international working group that was started by some ports in, in Europe. And it's a collection of about a dozen ports from around the world. And we talk about workforce development, workforce training. And it, we, we've just, it just started last year. And I was surprised to see, surprised to listen to each port almost talk about the identical set of issues. You've got ports all around the world, the Middle East, Asia, North America, and Europe, but really talking about the same issues. And everyone's got that, you know, there's a local twist to it. But really, when it comes to education and creating career pathways, I mean, what's, what's, I think, common amongst all the ports is that ports are economic engines wherever they are and whatever region they're located in. And so what, what does that mean? What are you doing as a, as that economic engine? So on the environmental side, on the career side, on the workforce side, you know, I think there's a lot of, a lot of things there that, there are thread, common threads that run, run through it for all ports.
Do we have a question from the floor? Have Mario up here? Can we get a, do you have a mic? I want to make sure everybody can hear the question. Maybe state your name and your affiliation if you're, if you can.
Mario Morales. I'm on the board of the Los Angeles Transportation Club, retired CSX Railroad Senior Account Manager. It was touched on a little bit, but I don't think it, it really gets talked about enough. You have, there is no doubt, we have the two most efficient, smartest ports in the United States, period. We don't have to argue that. And we're only going to get better. But the infrastructure, we're losing, we're, we're still going to lose market share. We're losing market share because there is no buy-in from the rails, the dray, the warehouse community. It takes even more. I don't know if data can fix that. What are we going to do about the entire infrastructure? It's more than the ports. You know, I drove in, and I know a lot of people here, we drove in from San Gabriel Valley. We, we, we came in from the inland empire. I mean, if, if the truckers are making that move, that's only going to hurt the port. It's only going to hurt turn times. What can we do from a smart, efficient way from the ports? Because the ports have to lead this, to help the rest of the infrastructure so that the whole system runs well. Because as great as the ports are, nothing is going to change until the entire infrastructure in Southern California is fixed. Who's going to lead that? Keep talking about it. Who's going to lead that side? I think it's got to come from the ports.
And the ports have been very engaged in these issues. I saw some of my transportation planning folks here. But we have been very involved with having a lot of those discussions throughout the region with the other regional partners, but also throughout the, the state and with the federal government. We have a lot of emphasis in the port itself on improving our infrastructure. And I mentioned our on-dock rail facilities that, that we are expanding. And, and we have a major project with our PRB on-dock rail support facility that we're going to be working on for the next decade plus. But you're right, we can make so many improvements within the port, but if we leave the gates and we get stuck on the freeways and we can't get the cargo through, that does have an impact. I had a conversation and see folks here in the room that I was talking with earlier this week that were talking about, they're talking to the shippers that are making choices to route their cargo to other ports because of how long it takes to get the container out of the port and, and to the, the next stop, and that dwell time, and the time that it takes to get the, the container out. They're losing so much time there that it actually can start to make sense for them to do the longer open ocean shipping routes and go to another port. That's something that we definitely need to address. We've seen a loss in market share over the last decade plus. And, and it's because folks are looking to diversify the gateways that they're sending their cargo to and to try to, to reduce their costs and, and improve their speed to market. And if we can't address the infrastructure challenges that we have in this local area to be able to process this cargo more, more efficiently, we'll continue to see those market share losses. So I agree with you. It's a big challenge and something that we are, continue to be engaged in. But it's, it's a big, big battle that this, the entire region needs to take on.
Ray, you want to add something?
I want to jump in on that. You know, there's huge challenges in, in the marine terminal business. The scheduling, appointment system for trucks to pick up their containers in the port, trucks need to be moved to off-peak. You know, there need to be, needs to be more trucks on the road at nighttime when the roads aren't as heavy. Distribution warehouses need to be open 24/7. We're open in the port 24/7. We have labor available to be supplied to work the ships, work the yards, work the gates. But the, why is a trucker, particularly an owner-operator, going to take a load out when that warehouse isn't open in the middle of the night? He's not going to park on the side of the road, and that's what the frustrations with the owner-operators. There's, there're inherent problems within the, the entire supply chain there. Distribution warehouses need to be open 24/7. That way, the, the drayage can effectively deliver the containers and bring them back to the port. And the port, we've got the 24-hour working conditions available to supply the movement of cargo.
We have a question from the, from the cards, and then we'll go back to the audience. And this is back to the question of, of automation and, and data. And the question is, do we have a sense of, of how many jobs could be lost to automation based upon the experience that we've seen in L.A. Long Beach as compared to how many new retraining options become available to workers?
Yes. At Pier 400, we're going to lose a very high percentage of all our jobs on the terminal, upwards of 85 to 90%. With a new technology available, those are the type of impacts. The upskilling and reskilling in the maintenance and repair area of work on the dock will provide some jobs, but, but the, not enough. The huge percentage of jobs lost will not be regained. And that's why we believe that there's automated processes that can work with human intervention and create the efficiencies necessary and not require automation at such a high level.
Ted, did you want to add anything?
Yeah. You know, I think it is hard. And like somebody stated earlier, you know, each terminal operator is choosing their own method and way to move forward. And whether they do or not, we're not sure. I think we've seen some good data out of one of the terminals, and I wouldn't quote me on it, but one of the automated terminals has been able to double their volume and increase man-hours by 25% approximately. And that's what we see about being more efficient and productive. We can get more throughput for them. We can increase jobs. And then besides the longshore jobs, there's, you know, 68,000 jobs are tied directly to the port. And, and those jobs need to flourish, too, and they will with continued throughput and volume.
All right. Can we take one from the floor? Yes?
David Ross, ILWU Local 13. So hearing about moving forward towards smart technologies to protect the environment, for example, with cleaner air and protecting the entire communities. Well, my concern is, we don't have much data on electric magnetic field exposure. And I'm concerned for not just ILW workforce, but for management, for truckers, for shippers, for everyone in the entire area in the port. Are we gathering more data on that? Are we, are we doing more tests? Because it feels like we're, I mean, growing up with technology all my life, we're moving fast and we have no data on it. So are we looking towards that with all this technology that we have to gather logistics? I mean, stats, statistics are very important in today's modern technology. Do we have any of that?
Good question. Anyone? Patrick, yes?
I'm not aware of any specific studies looking at increased EMI exposure to workers. Generally, the, the discussion has been that it's not an increased risk. You know, obviously, there's a number of folks working on the terminals today that spend their whole day working in an electrically driven piece of equipment, whether it's, whether that power's generated by a diesel engine or connected to the grid itself. So we already have a lot of examples of workers spending their day surrounded by EMI, so I'm not, or EM radiation. So I'm not expecting that to be a major stumbling block. But it's a valid question for a worker to say, when you put me in a different piece of equipment, how does my exposure to different health risks change? And I think it's, it's a question we should be prepared to answer more specifically as we put more of this equipment out into the, into the field.
Take one from the floor and then, or sorry, take one from, from the cards and then we'll go back to the floor. This is sort of a question about consumer purchasing habits driving the behavior of the supply chain, and wondering how each of you sort of maintain awareness or stay on top of consumer trends and other things that might be impacting businesses. Anyone want to take that one?
Well, some of the work that, that we do at the ports, we're always looking for new business opportunities. And we have our long-term cargo forecasts that, that we do that looks at containerized cargo, but also looks at the other types of cargo, bulk and, and break bulk, and trying to make our best estimates of where we think the trends are and where we think that there's potential for growth. And a lot of that has to do with capturing new business opportunities and also identifying for our own long-term planning what kind of facilities we need to make sure that we have available in the port to be able to, to capture those commodities. So I think that's a lot of, of the long-term planning work that we do is, is to put ourselves in the best position to, to be able to go after that and, and plan for our future terminal development.
I, I would just add, in the near term, I completely echo what Heather said and agree with, with what she said. But in the near term, which this may be worth a whole nother panel on another day, are tariffs. You know, we're reacting to tariffs. All ports, specifically with the, the location of L.A. and Long Beach and the Asia trade is, is having an impact on us. And, you know, the, the best we could do is, you know, as Heather said, is look at other business opportunities, also work closely with our elected officials, and, you know, work closely to stay, to see where the impacts are on tariffs, which seem to change on a daily basis from what's tweeted. But, you know, that's something we have to be able to handle and respond to in the near term.
Question from the floor.
Hi, I'm Roland Mosseri, and I'm a Research Director with the California Brain Tumor Association. I just want to applaud you for taking efforts to lower emissions and doing zero carbon footprints on the earth because I feel that that's really important. But the question for me is, the National Toxicology Program came out with a study last year that found exposure to radio frequency radiation from cell phones, Wi-Fi, you know, different sources can cause brain tumors, clear evidence of cancer in the heart and the brain and the adrenal medulla. And so my question for you is, is it good to replace something that is obviously pollutant with another type of pollutant to our workers, to the environment? And like Patrick said, it is very important to have those answers for the workers. You know, we have, we're seeing a lot of neurological effects being in this job and having a lot of testimonials coming in with people getting very, very sick from this technology. What kind of efforts are you taking to measure these radio frequency emissions? FCC current standards only protect from heating and burning right now. What efforts are we doing to see biological effects and how these workers are going to be impacted?
Thank you for the question. Anyone aware? This sort of related to the question of those studies. So I don't, I don't know if there's anything to add, or, Patrick?
Yeah, I, like I said, I, I'm sure there are some studies out there. I don't know them specifically to say what's been looked at with specific intent towards electromagnetic radiation exposure. You know, when you look at, at least from an electric equipment perspective, generally the intent of that equipment is not to emit radiation, whereas a cell phone has to emit radiation or it can't communicate, it can't function. Generally, trucks and cargo handling equipment to function don't need to broadcast that, that radiation. So if it does turn out that there's an issue, relatively simple shielding technologies, you know, simply wrapping a, a piece of power electronics in a thin piece of metal should eliminate the vast majority of that, that radiation. I think the only question is, are the current emissions levels high enough to, to warrant that mitigation measure?
We have a question sort of related to that near zero versus zero emission, but it, it relates to the impact of port decisions outside of the supply chain and the commercial availability and viability of some of the technologies, particularly in the trucking sector. So how can we be certain that there will be a product on the trucking side to meet the mandates that the ports and the states have established?
So part of the process that we set up, and I'm probably going to pitch this mostly over to Patrick because Patrick was our technical expert to help us with answering this question or at least starting to answer this question. It will be a process. But one of the things that we realized as we were setting out our aggressive goals to get to zero emissions on the trucking sector specifically by 2035, we recognized the technology isn't there yet. There are no commercially available feasible pieces of zero emission on-road Class 8 trucks available today. And so how do we get from where we are now to where we need to be to be able to meet that goal? And we recognize there's going to be challenges with, can the technology be developed and meet the duty cycle? Do we have the infrastructure available to, to be able to support the operations of that equipment? What is the price point? And can we make it make sense economically? And so one of the things that we committed to do was feasibility assessments at least every three years where we check in on the status of those technologies and understand where we still have gaps, where the challenges remain, so that we can focus our efforts on trying to overcome those hurdles and, and also so that we can be realistic about where those technologies are in their development and, and make sure that we're having an informed understanding about the path that we're on and, and our ability to be able to achieve those goals on the timelines that we laid out. So Patrick, I don't know if you want to offer anything more specific on trucks?
I would say you're absolutely right that right now, as we look out at the industry, the availability of Class 8 electric trucks is only suitable for a very niche set of operations. It is not a technology at this point that you can require for broad adoption. Now, we are going through these demonstrations. They're hugely important for us to understand where the technology is and how likely that we are to have trucks that can serve the broad base of operations required at the ports, and by when that would happen. So the, the demonstrations are absolutely crucial. The other part of that, and I hope we get some of this out of the demonstrations, is again, it's a data issue. It's very difficult for us to sit here and say, we know that battery electric can or cannot achieve the broad set of requirements in the ports, when it is almost impossible to get really clear information on what those operations entail. Distribution of trip distances, frequency of trips, charging times, you know, number of shifts worked per truck, all of these things are, are really critical to understanding what the duty cycle of a truck is and what that truck therefore needs to be able to achieve. And it sets very high bars for, for a truck in terms of endurance or range from an energy storage perspective. And so as we do these demonstrations and hopefully get more of this data, we'll be in a much better place, maybe in as little as a year from now, to look out and say, what are we seeing the, the real data coming back at, right? And where, you know, how quickly are we going to get to a place where battery electric is a, at least operationally broadly applicable solution?
Another question from the floor. Oh, we have one on the back. Okay.
Good morning. Such a great turnout. So good to see so many friends. My name is Rich Dines. I have a question for the entire panel. Too much attention is put on the Cleaner Action Plan as reducing emissions or reaching a zero emission goal. And for those that haven't read it, there are operational goals and requirements set in there as well, including a mandatory truck appointment system, and my personal favorite, the goal of achieving 50% of cargo movement by on-dock rail, which actually could be higher if you look at how much intermodal cargo moves in and out of our port. But today, since the ports are pushing terminal operators to reach this goal of zero emissions, it seems that some proposed terminal development projects only take into consideration of reduction in emissions. They don't look to improve productivity and efficiency. They're not looking to increase terminal capacity so we can have greater throughput and so we can recapture some of the lost cargo market share that we've seen over the past decade. So my question for the panel is, being that the ports are trying to achieve an operational excellence, do the ports have a role in determining which projects at the terminals make the most sense? Should the port say that's a good project or that's not a good project based upon is it in alignment with the mission of the ports?
I'll grab the first one.
Okay, great.
I think one of your statements was that it doesn't address the throughput or the capacity issues, and I think the cap explicitly recognizes the role of automation and at the port to promote clean air and protect public health. But generally, and at least in 50% of the -- or both the terminals that we've seen automate now, they densify and they do increase throughput.
Anybody else?
I'll just throw out one quick thought, and that is, I think part of the focus on emissions reductions for those projects is because it doesn't matter how great a project you have from an operational efficiency or economic perspective if you can't get past CEQA, right? So we have to -- it's almost an immediate filter that says, can we get this project permitted, yes or no? And then from that set, you start to ask the question, which ones are the best? So until we modify CEQA, I won't say fix, but until we modify CEQA, I think the approach still very much depends on which projects can provide the greatest emissions reductions.
And for those in the room not from California, the California Environmental Quality Act is what Patrick is talking about, and it drives a lot of the discussions about permit approvals in the state. And the time it takes to get CEQA clearance is the big question.
It's the other four-letter word besides automation, yeah?
Yeah.
So some of the work that we're doing at Long Beach is, we've, for many years, we've been headed down a path of putting some tools in place so that we can make smarter decisions going forward, and we developed a land use tool to help us really evaluate the value of different projects as they go forward and really understand if we approach projects in slightly different ways, what sort of revenue generation could be available from that, what sort of emission profile might be associated with that. So it's a tool that we have internally, and it's something that we are hoping to be able to start using as we evaluate different projects as they come forward. Another effort that we're involved with right now that sort of builds on that is the update to our Portmaster Plan. We've been going through that process now for a couple different, for a couple years, and we have our draft plan that just recently went out for public comment. Having those tools in place can help us to really make sure as we're going forward with new future projects that we're evaluating what makes the most sense for us to be able to achieve our long-term goals and really do more long-term development planning, tying in what kinds of facilities we need in the port to what the cargo forecast looks like, what types of business lines we can capture, where it makes sense to build those, what kind of supporting facilities we need to have in the port and throughout the region so that we can start making smarter choices to be able to achieve our ultimate goals. So we do have those that we're on that path, and I think you're right, and we do have some improvement that we need to make, but we're recognizing that and trying to make sure that we're planning for that going forward.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, just regarding the on-dock rail, you know, with all the technology and data that's available, we're an end-user port. We're making full dumps on ships here in LA, Long Beach. Many other ports in the world don't do that. We should be dictating to our foreign port partners how to stow those vessels. If you stowed an entire hatch, say, on deck for Kansas City, Chicago, then we could load the train, straight from the vessel, discharge from the vessel, straight to the train without the container hitting a point of rest and being rehandled. The technology, data is available, and the workforce is there to do it. We just haven't achieved that, and we need to dictate to those foreign ports. Otherwise, we end up doing all the rehandling here.
Were there other questions from the floor? We got some over here? Okay.
Hi, how are you? My name is Alex Spatteroo. I run an engineering company that focuses on green tech transfer. I'm also the faculty of the UCLA School of Engineering, and I also lecture at the Institute of Environment and Sustainability at UCLA. I'm here to share with you a point of information and to share some good news and some bad news, okay? The point of information is next year, we're going to be running a, in the ports of San Pedro, we're going to be running a drone-based sniffer program, which is going to fly in a plume of the ships to detect whether or not they are complying with the fuel quality rules specified by CICA, by IMONI rules, and the California sulfur rule, okay? In that process, we do a lot of work with UAVs, with drones, okay? I just want to set that aside for the moment, okay? In doing the research and preparing the protocol for that, for these trials, we actually came across data which indicates that the actual level of pollution that the modelers are showing for the ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach may be too high. In fact, we think that there's data that indicates that it's not as bad as it's projected to be, or what we're looking at, which is quite interesting, by the way. And the need is for a bottom-up data collection that allows you to have better models and a better understanding what actually is being polluted and from where that pollution is coming from. Because personally, right now, I think that the projections of emissions coming from the port, from the shipping industry, are unfortunately too high, okay? That's the initial indications that we're getting at the moment.
Just want to, because I know we, I want to get as many questions as possible, so please.
I'm getting to the point. Thank you. Okay? The good news is that drone technology can actually help bring jobs to the very folks that are being displaced by automation, okay? And that's something that should not be resisted, that's something that should be embraced, okay? So that's the good news part about it, okay? And the question that I have, I'm getting to it, is I don't want to, I'm seeing resistance to drones. In fact, when it's a tool that could enhance the ability of a port to operate more efficiently and to lower its pollution picture. So why is there that resistance? Thank you, that was a question.
Thank you. Anybody want to comment on preparing or training for drones? Any takers? You've stumped the panel?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. We had another question over here, I think, a couple on this table, Tom Parker.
Good morning.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
This is Rajan Chandra Shah. I'm from Bangladesh. I have a question already I sent to you. That is, what is the role of smarter port initiatives for developing countries' port? Just as giving one example, Chitongh Port, 2.9 million tuas are delivering by manual handling. On the contrary, we are now getting the news, data, and others for the Long Beach or Port of Los Angeles. So we are feeding to the PSC Singapore and Colombo. So if the smart port becomes the 64th position of the world busiest container port by manual conventional handling, how far it is possible to be smart by Chitongh in coming days? Because we are handling only our own cargoes, and the quantity is 2.9 million tuas. So I came from Bangladesh from 20,000 kilometer far distance to know and get learning from you and how the smart port initiatives will go to the developing countries from here to there, because we are feeding also Long Beach Port. We are making shipment from Chitongh to Long Beach. Sometimes it's a failure of shipment, and you are not getting the ready-made garments. So the shipment failure and others, lots of problems over there. So becoming a smart port, we need to collaborate between the smart port and the conventional ports and make it more performance. So we are seeking your kind collaborations for developing our ports.
So I think if I understood the question about sort of international collaboration and support for ports in other parts of the world, I think we had, yeah, Ray, I think you talked about that, so.
It's a different talking, and actually, we are the urban spoke system, spoke sport. So you are in hubs, so we need a good collaborations to making the full and interland connections in, among the ports. Thank you very much for hearing this.
I think we'll, if we can, we'll take one more question, maybe over here, and then, because we do have an award that we have to give out to close the session, so.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jordan, I'm with Avalon Risk Management. So I'm involved a lot with like insurance for trucking, and one of the things we've noticed in the past years is there's been a lot of regulatory action made against the port infrastructure here. So my question is, what are you guys doing to the beneficial cargo owners, telling them, hey, continue to use our port even though there's all this regulatory action that's telling you not to use our port, maybe going to Houston or maybe going to Jacksonville? What are you guys doing to convince those people to continue to use the port infrastructure here within Los Angeles?
It's a great, it's a great question. You know, I think it's, I guess it's a, there's, I have a lot of thoughts rattling through my head, so I'm trying to organize them real quickly here. So I think, you know, it's no secret that we are the most expensive port complex, period. You know, it takes, as Gene, my boss Gene Soroka will regularly talk about, you know, it takes about $500 to get a container through this complex, whereas Savannah, it's about $250, and London Gateway, it's about $100. So to your point, why would you send something through here? And it's not, and I think someone else, maybe it was Chad or someone else, talked about our discretionary cargo. So it's not just because we're LA, so why? And I think maybe that's, this is sort of the perfect question to sort of sum up this whole conversation in that I would, at least as LA, and, you know, I don't want to speak for Heather, but I think we would both, as the complex argue, you know, I mean, I think it's what we're doing around making the movement of cargo through our respective ports more efficient and providing assurances, I mean, not assurances in that, you know, that we are working towards greater efficiency, you know, with Ray and Chad here, you know, that confirms that we have, you know, we have a current CBA that's operating, that there's labor stability through our there. So again, it gives that sort of assurance of consistency. So there's consistency on different fronts through our, you know, through our complex, and then, you know, with other, you know, examples of it can, you know, because of the infrastructure that we have in place with on-dock rail of all of our terminals and Heather's point, continuously working on how to improve on-dock rail capabilities, again, we provide that assurance, a level of consistency to get a container from here to Chicago faster than swinging it through the Panama Canal, or, you know, we would argue, a better system than getting it maybe through Prince River. So I think it's, we really offer, I think, a lot of what we've all talked about today as our competitive advantage over another port.
And then I do want to close it there. I'll give Avine the last word, but I think he does reflect the sentiments of a lot of what we've heard today. I'm sorry if we didn't get to all of your questions. It's such a big topic, but I think we did cover a lot of territory today, and I would like to have you help me thank the people who've spent the time there this morning sharing their expertise with you. So we're not quite done yet. I'm going to invite them to sit back down at the table, and I'm going to move on to an important presentation. And my personal thanks to all of you for a really informative and panel and one that was truly in the spirit of education. This whole idea of having the university play a role in facilitating a discussion like this is what the late Dominic Moretti, who was an original member of the Policy and Steering Committee, meant when he said he wanted to bring the university to the docks and the docks to the university. Dominic was instrumental in the development of the town hall and making sure that the ILWU was at the table from the beginning. In fact, as many of you may know, the town halls began life as the ILWU State of the Trade and Transportation Town Hall. And I know he would have been pleased to see Ray taking part tonight and the representation of the ILWU in the room. Dominic was something of a waterfront Renaissance man, as your program indicates. He was a proud longshoreman and proud graduate with his bachelor's and master's from Long Beach, Go Beach. He also received his PhD from UCLA. He split his days on the docks, first as a member of Local 13 and then as a shipping clerk for Local 63, with time spent in the classroom as a teacher at Dodson Junior High in Long Beach, and as Dr. Moretti, a professor at East Los Angeles College where he helped to establish the International Trade Program. He was passionate about education, understanding that there was something new to learn about this industry, no matter how long you had worked in it or lived in its shadow. Two years ago, after his passing, the Moretti Award was created in his memory to recognize someone who has helped to foster partnerships along the supply chain, facilitate dialogue, and has demonstrated long-term dedication to the industry and earned the respect of a wide variety of stakeholders. Last year's recipient was Mary Ann Gastelum, and she's here this morning to present the award to our 2019 recipient.
Thank you, Tom. And congratulations on a fabulous program today. This was really a wonderful start in the upcoming Smart Trade Week. It's wonderful to see you here, particularly so many familiar faces, and I want to give a particular shout-out to the ladies of logistics, the LOLs. Thank you for being here. It is my great pleasure to present the Dominic Moretti Award to Professor Jen Giuliani. I can't think of a more deserving person, well, except for Norman Fassler Katzen, used to lead, to just give credibility to the selection committee. Now, in your program, on page 10, you will find a short summary of Jen, of Dr. Giuliani's accomplishment. Now, given the importance of this award and the importance of the recipient, I will now read to you the remaining 20 pages of Dr. Giuliani's CV. Just to give you a sense of the many accomplishments of this distinguished professor. But you know, it really will not do justice to her. A CV can only give you a description, cannot give you a description of the passion and the commitment and the dedication of a person. So instead, let me share with you how Jen influenced my professional life and the impact she made on the Center for International Trade and Transportation. Now, starting with one important fact, in 2004, Jen brought Tom up to CITT. I recall so well when she told me that her young and talented PhD candidate could help us stimulate transportation research at Cal State Long Beach. Well, and obviously, the rest is history, right? Over the years, Tom and I have enjoyed, begrudged, commiserated, but mostly valued Jen guidance and her directives. You see, Jen does not hold back when she sees a teaching opportunity, nor is she a person who gives compliments leisurely. So when her remarks on a project, a big project, on a job, on research, were quite good, Tom and I would just beam with pride. As most of our valued, most of the members of the Policy and Steering Committee know, Jen's contribution at our monthly meetings was immeasurable. She was able to cut through the chase to many heated discussion that we probably had. One of her popular lines that I recall is, "I hate to say this." Now, whether or not she hated to say it, she always offered a different perspective that usually amazed all of us for her really out-of-the-box thinking, or to use a term of the day, her smart thinking. Likewise, her savvy input on the yearly town hall topic or theme that was selected is a testimony of her industry knowledge, her role at the, the role of the university, and the importance of an open dialogue. Talking about town halls... of an open dialogue. Talking about town halls, I know many of you have attended previous town halls, if not most, so you do recall how Jen's assignment was at the end of the discussion to analyze and summarize what she's heard, the entire proceeding, and then present it here and there. She was, she always presented an impressive, under-targeted report on the highlights of the discussion, and I think that is so impressive. Today, we have a number of students who have to take care of that with lengthy discussion with their faculty. I have a number of things, but we're short on time, so let me just point out a few things that Dominic Moretti and Jen have in common. Both are Italian, both have a PhD, as you heard, they are professors and dedicated educators. For both Dominic and Jen, the operative word was and is collaboration. They promote active engagement of the supply chain industry, the community, the policymaker, and educational partners for the betterment of the trade and transportation industry and for the workforce. Both Dominic and Jen have a unifying legacy. Dominic would be so pleased that this award and all the accomplishments that are associated with it goes to Jen Giuliani, and so am I, with deep appreciation for all she taught me. Now, would you please join me in congratulation, Dr. Giuliani, for receiving the award?
Oh, my goodness. The first thing I have to do, because I'm short, is this. This was a big surprise for me. First of all, I want to thank everybody for, for giving me this amazing award. I was one of Dominic's many admirers, as everybody knows, and one of actually the advocates to establish this award in his honor, and little did I think that I would ever be standing here receiving it. So this is quite the amazing moment. Thank you, Mary Ann, for telling so many stories about me. I'm going to say a little bit more about Dominic. You all know him as the, as a founding member of CITT, but he was also a founding member of our Mettrans Advisory Board. And from the beginning, his role as the labor representative influenced every aspect of our activities, from research to outreach. He enabled us to develop broad relationships across all of the stakeholders in the international trade supply chain, and these broad relationships have in turn guided us in terms of what we research and how we do it. These relationships are also what makes us, the center, very unique, and has actually been one of the key ingredients to our own success. I'm particularly grateful to receive this award, given that I am a professor rather than a practitioner, and I will admit that I have certainly done my share of ivory tower research. But through Dominic and so many others in the real world, my work has actually been very much enriched and grounded. And one of the greatest rewards for those of us professors is to come up with ideas that get implemented. And this actually would never be possible if it weren't for the education that I received from Dominic and from so many of you that are actually in this room, people at the ports, people in industry, people in state and local agencies. So all of, all of you have actually helped me to be able to do what I've been able to do. So needless to say, I'm really honored to be placed in the same league as Dominic. Dominic was both a scholar and a longshore worker, a person who bridged labor and scholarship, as you just heard. The world needs more of these human bridges. Solving today's complicated problems requires collaboration and compromise, and these are only possible when we can build from a strong network of trust and understanding. And that's what Dominic actually has been able to do, and that we really want to carry forward. So I want to thank Dominic, and I also want to thank all of the people who voted for me, and I really appreciate it, and I want you all to have a great time at the Smart Week, all of our events that are going on. So thank you very much.
Congratulations, Jen, and thank you, Mary Ann. Both of these women have served as my own mentors, and I'm thrilled that, that our industry has recognized the value of your contributions. Thank you all, and to our entire panel of distinguished guests again for your expertise. As we conclude, a couple of reminders. Tonight's proceedings will be captured in a summary report available on our website. If you wish a copy of the video, it will also be available on the CITT website once it's all prepped. Make sure that it's, it's accessible. And so thank you to Dave Kelly and Dave Pleskett and the AM team for putting it all together. Once again, we owe a great deal of gratitude to many, many people who dedicated time and effort and money to make it happen. On our team, I, you all know Alex Traver. She's our more-than-talented event coordinator. I gave her a particularly difficult task this year with the combining a number of different events, and she handles it amazing, amazingly. And that includes her team of Marissa Idy. I also want to thank our other CITT staff members and research assistants who serve under the direction of Tyler Reebe. Tyler Reebe, you can meet downstairs. He has a recently released workforce development text that you can talk to him about. The, our other, our team also includes Elizabeth Warren, Catherine Showalter, Ben Olson, Deanna Matsumoto, Katrina Soriano, who's downstairs, and we can't do any of this without them. And of course, all of the, the amazing people back at, at the College of Professional and International Education and the Mettrans Transportation Center. And thank you again to our sponsors. And thank you as well also to the waitstaff here who's been serving and taking care of us this morning. So thank you very much. And finally, to our, our Policy and Steering Committee. This is a group that meets monthly to guide our efforts and ensure that the work of the, of CITT remains relevant. One month ago today, this very day, we lost one of our dedicated Steering Committee members, Connie Rivera, to cancer. Connie worked with the Alameda Corridor Transportation Authority. She was not only a longtime supporter of CITT, where she helped advise on the development of the town hall and the script, and always provided a voice of reason in the room, but she also provided access to our students to programs like the Alameda Corridor. And she did the same thing, I know, for her work with the Y and with Rotary. She was a journalism grad from Cal State Long Beach, but certainly gave a lot to the industry. And as you heard, she was one of the proud members of the Ladies of Logistics, the LOLs, which is a not-so-secret society of powerful women who, from what I can tell, gather to control the world and drink wine. On behalf of CITT and Mettrans, I want to wish our condolences to the LOLs, to all of Connie's family and friends, which are numerous, and I know many in the room count themselves among that group. We adjourn today in her memory, grateful for her many contributions to CITT, this event in particular, the university, the community, and this industry which she loved and which loved her in return. So thank you for coming today. I hope you found the information of value, and we hope to see you at next year's event. We stand adjourned.